The that have a topic they would like to bring forward to discuss at future meetings in addition to our agendas going forward.
A week or so ago, Dr. Leal asked if board members had suggestions for things to cover in next year's meetings. So that might be something we could potentially discuss at a meeting if others think that's worthwhile.
I can imagine.
All right, anybody else? Move on, we have reports, Julie, the PTO report.
We're in high tech tonight. Sorry, no preseason. It's May-ember, as you all know, so all of our hair is on fire. So at least my hair. So I just want to do a 2024, 2025 year review. So first of all, I wanted to thank all of you for your hard work and the glory. Thank you very much. I'm excited to report that our slate is almost entirely full, including the new, I don't know if the new co-chairs, co-presidents, whatever they want to be called, I'm happy to call them. Next year are Megan Hadler and Ray Dobash will be taking over, so that's exciting. Some of the things that we are happy to have supported this year, so many initiatives, I'm not going to name all of them, but I had to include Splash Bash, and we're already reserved for next year, it's ready to go. Pumpkin Bash, Pumpkin Chase, which already has registrations for next year. Project Full Service, the LBES seasonal classroom parties, teacher and staff holiday giving, Charleston RAP and Mint and Fundraising, plus the sponsors that Josh Fox secured in our biggest year ever. Teacher and staff appreciation items like conference meals, Stock the Bridge, and I have to admit, an epic Friends Teacher Appreciation Week, and you even saw the decorations and the themes. Teacher Re birthday meals for bluffingtons, grade level socials we had for every grade or have one coming up. New curriculum enhancement activities like the Butterfly Program and Be Kind Musician for kindergarteners, plus the oldies and goodies like Little Wisdom. We got an LBMS bobcat whose tail hopefully will be anatomically corrected some point. Thanks to your mom, we appreciate that. So that's exciting. We've had IR snacks, book fairs, book clubs, spareware, recycling and composting, and then eighth grade DC goodies and a lot of eighth grade promotion events and activities coming up. So been a tough year, been fun year, so that's all I have for you, something here, yeah? Thank you so much to the PTO, you guys are amazing.
Congratulations on being done.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Michael, break some with the wireless.
Slightly higher tech here, and so got a couple of things going on. So first of all, this weekend on Saturday is Sunrise Rocks at Sunrise Park from three to 10 p.m. Making sure that it's raining today and tomorrow so that it'll be sunny. We do have a rain day for Sunday, but we're not going to need it, so that's all good. We've got a bunch of sponsors so far, and the sponsors have already raised about 50% of what we raised in full last year. So that's before selling some t-shirts, we're doing hats this year. I'm going to have, so we did a aforementioned artwork that I've discussed before. We're going to be bringing some of that to Sunrise to have people go through. And then likewise, October 18th next year, Mark Callers at the gallery in Lake Forest, we're having an event. Yeah, where we will be doing hors d'oeuvres and drinks and auctioning off some of the artwork. We also, let's see here, have done these screen grants, have come in, and we've gotten a really solid batch of nearly 10 grants. They include the mosaic, which we are happy to sponsor for a second year. We were at the unveiling of it the other day. We also have a kiln grant, we've got the Science Olympia for our fantastic championship team that we're really thrilled to be helping with. And then the other thing I was going to say is that Susan Armbruce, who is a teacher, a former teacher who recently passed away. So in addition to the alliance of Jennifer Harris Memorial Fund, which sits within the alliance for reading enrichment, there is now this Susan Armbruce Memorial Fund, the mission of which is sort of along the lines of the alliance. But right now, they, her friends and her loved ones are raising $1,900 for a bench to put in the park in her honor. And then anything additional after that will just kind of be for the Susan Memorial Fund. Shout out to that, we made a bunch of changes to the alliance website. So if you haven't seen that, check it out, we're refreshing it from, I would say, some staleness there. So that's exciting. And things are going really well. Does anyone have any questions?
Is summer giraffe tickets or show up and?
Show up. So show up, and there's going to be donation, like QR codes all over the place. We're going to be selling hats for either $50, $75 or $100, some TBD there, some discussions. And there's going to be face painting and sidewalk talk for kids, there's going to be food, it's BYOB, there's going to be cupcakes, all sorts of good stuff. It's going to be fun. And four or five bands. So again, starting at three o'clock, going until the sun sets at 10 o'clock, and they pick us up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the alliance.
Of course.
Hey, I was going to have a huge president's report speech just to one-up Ann because I'm filling in, but I don't. But we are looking for board members to do promotion on June 3rd. So Lauren and Tim, shake hands, anybody else interested?
What is it?
So you help pass out the diplomas at the promotion. Yeah, it's okay.
I can.
You can talk to me.
Yeah, just let us know.
I think we were planning on going, anyway.
It's nice. You can shake some hands and kiss some babies. All right, and then.
I don't have a report tonight.
Hopefully. All right, so we will move on to our discussion and presentations. We will do Catherine, the ESY update.
Can I correct this ad?
Yes.
Great, I mean, my technology is. Look at that. Hi, friends. Oops.
Hi, I am super excited to talk to you about summer scholars and extended school year. We are coming back this year. It will be my third year running the program. And I'm just excited. It's a really great time. We have great teachers returning, and we have a lot of students signed up to participate. So this year again, we'll be offering our preschool program, jumpstart to kindergarten, academics for grades one through eight. And then this year, we have specials, we'll have wellness again, but instead of music, we are offering arts. And then, of course, we have the extended school year services for our students with IP's who require continuous education through the summer. So we have our learning behavior specialist that will be working with them to help address their needs. We're meeting from June 11th through July 2nd with no school on June 19th. This is 15 days of education and fun. We meet from eight fifteen to twelve, Monday through Friday. So actually, we're going Wednesday to Wednesday. It's a little different, but it's going to be fun. We're going to have a great time. In past years, the bobcat and the fox have come to visit our students. With some students, it's a really big hit with the pre-k. It's a little scary, but we're still going to try again this year. Tuition was, again, $400 per student, with transportation being $100 for a single ride or $150 for a family. We didn't change the prices from last year. This year, we'll have eight classroom teachers, two special teachers, four learning behavior specialists, eight paraprofessionals, one occupational therapist, one school psychologist, one speech pathologist, one school nurse and one secretary. I would like to take a moment just to give you a couple of updates. Our school nurse, Jennifer Denhart, and Kathy Sullivan, they're splitting the roles. So when you look at the staffing plan, you'll see both of their names. They've split the days so that they can both be able to work the program. It's really great to have two returning people that work in the district, so they know our students and they are very well placed with their needs. The other thing I want to update you on is usually our occupational therapist only works one day a week. This year, we got an update from what you had in the packet. We got a new IP.
A week or so ago, Dr. Leal asked about its board members had suggestions for things to cover in next year's meetings. So that might be something we could potentially discuss at a meeting if others think that's worthwhile.
I can bet you. All right, anybody else move on? We have reports, Julie, the PTO report.
Going high tech tonight. Sorry, no preseason. It's May-ember, as you all know, so all of our hair is on fire. So at least my it's. So I just want to do a 2024, 2025 year review. So first of all, I wanted to thank all of you for your hard work and the glory. Thank you very much. I'm excited to report that our slate is almost entirely full, including the new, I don't know if the new co-chairs, co-presidents, whatever they want to be called, I'm happy to call them. Next year are Megan Hadler and Ray Dovash will be taking over, so that's exciting. Some of the things that we are happy to have supported this year, so many initiatives, I'm not going to name all of them, but had to include Splash Bash, and we're already reserved for next year, it's ready to go. Pumpkin Bash, Pumpkin Chase, which already has registrations for next year. Project Full Service, the LBES seasonal classroom parties, teacher and staff holiday giving, Charleston Raff and Mint and fundraising, plus the sponsors that Josh Fox secured in our biggest year ever. Teacher and staff appreciation items like conference meals, Stock the Bridge, and I have to admit, an epic Friends Teacher Appreciation Week, and you saw the decorations and themes. Teacher Re birthday meals for bluffingtons, grade level socials we had for every grade or have one coming up. New curriculum enhancement activities like the Butterfly Program and Be Kind Musician for kindergarteners. Plus the oldies and goodies like Little Wisdom. We got an LBMS Bobcat whose tail hopefully will be anatomically corrected some point. You made for.
It's already on it.
I hate to hear that. Thanks to your mom. We appreciate that. So that's exciting. We've had IR snacks, book fairs, book clubs, spareware, recycling and composting. And then eighth grade DC goodies and a lot of eighth grade promotion events and activities coming up. So been checked here, been fun here. So that's all I have for you. Something here, yeah? Thank you so much to the PTO. You got to carry me.
Congratulations on being done.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Michael breaks down with the wireless.
Slightly higher tech here. And so got a couple of things going on. So first of all, this weekend on Saturday is Sunrise Rocks at Sunrise Park from three to 10 p.m. Making sure that it's raining today and tomorrow, so that it'll be sunny. We do have a rain day for Sunday, but we're not going to need it, so that's all good. We've got a bunch of sponsors so far, and the sponsors have already raised about 50% of what we raised in full last year. So that's before selling instead of t-shirts, we're doing hats this year. I'm going to have, so we did a forementioned artwork that I've discussed before. We're going to be bringing some of that to Sunrise to have people go through. And then likewise, October 18th next year, Mark Callers at the gallery in Lake Forest, we're having an event. Yeah, where we will be doing hors d'oeuvres and drinks and auctioning off some of the artwork. We also, let's see here, have done these screen grants, have come in and we've gotten a really solid batch of nearly 10 grants. They include the mosaic, which we are happy to sponsor for a second year. We were at the unveiling of it the other day. We also have a kiln grant. We've got the Science Olympia for our fantastic championship team that we're really thrilled to be open with. And then the other thing I was going to say is that Susan Armbruce, who is a teacher, a former teacher who recently passed away. So in addition to the alliance of Jennifer Harris Memorial Fund, which sits within the alliance for reading enrichment, there is now these Susan Armbruce Memorial Funds. The mission of which is a sort of along the lines of the alliance, but right now they, her friends and her loved ones are raising $1,900 for a bench to put in the park in her honor. And then anything additional after that will just kind of be for the Susan Memorial Fund. Shout out that we've made a bunch of changes to the alliance website. So if you haven't seen that, check it out. We're refreshing it from, I would say, some staleness there. So that's exciting. And things are going really well. Does anyone have any questions?
Is Summer in Jurassic tickets or Show Up and?
Show Up. So Show Up, and there's going to be donation, like QR codes all over the place. We're going to be selling hats for either 50, 75 or $100. Time TBD there, some discussions. And there's going to be face painting and sidewalk talk for kids, food, it's DYOB. There's going to be cupcakes, all sorts of good stuff. It's going to be fun. And four or five bands. So again, starting at three o'clock, going until the sun sets at 10 o'clock, and they pick us up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the alliance.
Of course.
Hey, I was going to have a huge president's report speech just to one-up and because I'm filling in, but I don't. But we are looking for board members to do promotion on June 3rd. So Lauren and Tim shake hands. Anybody else interested?
What is it?
So you help pass out the diplomas at the promotion. Yeah, it's okay.
I can.
You can talk to me.
Yeah, just let us know.
I think we were planning on going.
It's nice. You can shake some hands and kiss some babies. All right, and then.
I don't have a report tonight.
Hopefully. All right, so we all move on to our discussion and presentations. We will do Kathleen, the E.S.Y. update.
Can I correct this ad?
Yes.
Great. Let me get my technology. Look at that. Hi, friends. I am super excited to talk to you about summer scholars and extended school year. We are coming back this year. It'll be my third year running the program, and I'm just excited. It's a really great time. We have great teachers returning and we have a lot of students signed up to participate. So this year again, we'll be offering our preschool program, jumpstart to kindergarten, academics for grades one through eight. And then this year we have specials. We'll have wellness again, but instead of music, we are offering arts. And then, of course, we have the extended school year services for our students with IEPs who require continuous education through the summer. So we have our learning behavior specialist that will be working with them to help address their needs. We're meeting from June 11th through July 2nd with no school on June 19th. This is 15 days of education and fun. We meet from eight 15 to 12, Monday through Friday. So actually, we go into Wednesday, the Wednesday. It's a little different, so it's going to be fun. We're going to have a great time. Oh, look at that. In past years, the Bobcat and the Fox have come to visit our students. With some students, it's a really big hit with the pre-K. It's a little scary, but we're still going to try again this year. Tuition was again $400 per student, with transportation being $100 for a single ride or $150 for a family. We didn't change the prices from last year. This year we'll have eight classroom teachers, two special teachers, four learning behavior specialists, eight paraprofessionals, one occupational therapist, one school psychologist, one speech pathologist, one school nurse and one secretary. I would like to take a moment just to give you a couple of updates. Our school nurse, Jennifer Denhart and Kathy Sullivan, they're splitting the roles. So when you look at the staffing plan, you'll see both of their names. They've split the days so that they can both be able to work the program. It's really great to have two returning people that work in the district, so they know our students and they are very well placed with their needs. The other thing I want to update you on is usually our occupational therapist only works one day a week. This year we got an update from what you had in the packet. We got a new IEP that had minutes that pushed us over the one day mark, and then we got two new avails that will be done during the school. So instead of working one day a week, she'll be working two days a week. So that's just a small little change that happened this afternoon that is different from what you've had from me. I'm also very excited to say, with the exception of our school, the speech pathologist, everyone is already someone that works in-house. We have a lot of returning staff and new staff too that were interested to get involved. So I'm super excited that it's Lake Bluff staff all the way. And then our speech pathologist is a woman that's been with us the past two summers. She's a retired speech pathologist that enjoys working with us in the summer because she loves doing speech pathology and she likes working with students. And she's been a great addition to our summer team. So very excited about that. And that's just my contact info. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, how many students do you know? Do you know how many students were signed up?
Yes, right now we have 63 students signed up. It's a little bit less than previous years. I think just the timing played a little part of that, but we still have the same staffing, just given some of the needs of the students. Any other question?
Yeah, thank you so much. Do you want to stay and do pre-K?
Sure. If you're okay. Yeah, I'm okay. I might have to grab my phone if you ask too many difficult questions, but I think I got this. So I wanted to, on behalf of Tracy, I wanted to share and update about our preschool programming. Historically, we've had three-year-olds come in the morning for preschool, and then in the afternoon, we have four-year-olds come. Due to our enrollment numbers, this next year, we will have a combined three, four class in the morning and then a four-year-old class in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to curriculum survey results, literacy and class size audit reset.
I'm going to try to connect up here. All right. I'm debuting a new Lake Bluff keynote template today. It's very exciting. And it is keynote because we're trying to transition to some new iPad applications. So tonight I'm going to be talking about the, a few different items in this presentation. One is the family curriculum survey that we did earlier this year. The other is a literacy audit that we had completed this year, and the other is a class size audit that we had completed. We always talk about our mission and vision. I'm so grateful for our student board reps who remind us every meeting of our, of our goals as a district. And I'm going to try to connect them here as well. So we will go through these one at a time. As a reminder, the family curriculum and support survey was to better understand the experiences and preferences of our families on a few different issues. One was summer programming, the other was related arts and world language programming. And then the other was extra support, like tutoring, an extra support that parents might be seeking outside of the school day. We had 183 responses, which is pretty good for us. We estimate that we have about 600 families. That's not something that we keep real tight track of. But for 183 responses, that's a pretty robust response for surveys for us. The majority of the respondents had one or two students in our district, and the majority of students represented were in grades three through eight. So you can kind of see the breakdown there. So first off, summer programming and preferences. So first of all, I just want to thank Kathleen for all the hard work that she's done as our summer school and E.S.Y. principal. We did have a majority of our parents that filled out the survey indicate that summer school was not the most important thing to them in our district. And that many of our students had not participated in past summer offerings. But when we asked them if they were going to participate in summer programming, what were their interests? It kind of broke out in terms of sports and physical activities, this was the highest on the list, 61. They could, they could select any or all. So sports and physical activities, 61% noted that. Academic enrichment, 54%, arts and creativity, 51%. Social emotional development and like leadership opportunities came out at 48%. Technology and coding at 41%, and then world language programming came in last, 26%. So this is just kind of the information that was provided to us in the survey for our families. We'll talk in a minute about what we'd like to do with this information. In terms of arts and related arts programming, parents overwhelmingly rated these items as extremely are very important, specifically during the school year. So all of our related arts programming, including PE, library, STEAM, et cetera. In terms of world language, we had Spanish and French listed, and then we asked them to list any other languages. Spanish came out at 95% of respondents indicated that Spanish was important to them. 28% indicated French, and again, they could have chosen both, and some did. And then the next furthest down were Mandarin and Latin at 3% and 2%. And then we had some other languages with one, one or two people mentioning those. So I think we're offering the right languages at this point. Other areas that families mentioned in the open-ended responses in terms of other programming that they might like to see. These were ones that got definitely more than, you know, four or five mentions. So life skills at middle school, financial literacy, some cooking, woodshop, some more traditional like home economics type classes. Gardening, executive functioning. So there were, there was definitely a lot of mention of just those kind of practical skills. There were a few mentions of language immersion programming. So in our district, there are a few folks who referenced other schools that have dual language programming. And what that means is kind of having students learn Spanish and English within the classroom during all of their subjects. But the goal of being biliterate, bicultural and bilingual by the end of fifth grade. That's typically the goal of a language immersion program. There wasn't a lot of mention of this, and that's a really, really big kind of investment in redesign. So I just mentioned it here because when we asked about world languaging, we had world language programming. We had a few people mention that. There were some questions about science and social studies at elementary in terms of the enrichment programming that we started this year. And I just want to clarify, we tried to do some of this at the roundtable that we had with the community. There was sort of a misconception that we are teaching less science and social studies now that it's taking place once per week. But actually, we're teaching as much, if not more, science and social studies at elementary in this current model. And then there was some mention of other arts opportunities. In the past, we have had some drama classes here. Dance was mentioned, strings or orchestra was mentioned as in addition to our music program. So again, not overwhelming, not enough to make it up there with the rest of our programming, but certainly some things that parents express an interest in. In terms of tutoring and extra support, 55% of our families indicated that they had hired tutors for extra support. 55 of the family, 55% of the families that filled out the survey, I should say, so about 90 families. These were the areas that they indicated were the reasons for the tutoring. So academic skill building or addressing learning challenges as identified in maybe a student's IEP already. And then academic enrichment and homework and organization. 69 of the families expressed that they had had experienced barriers to accessing tutoring. And those top barriers were scheduling, financial or lack of options for tutoring. The schedule was sort of like, does it fit in their schedule to do that, the type of tutoring that they had available to them? Of the families that did seek tutoring, these are the grades it began in, the majority in grades one and two. And then three through five, kindergarten was third, grades six to eight, 11%, and then a small group in pre-K. And then the majority of families that participated in tutoring did it either during the school year or year round. 43 and 42% said that. And then once per week was the overwhelming number of times per week that they engaged with it. And then we asked if the school district were able to provide resources, which would be the most beneficial. And after-school academic support did come out on top. Then summer enrichment, online learning tools for home, and then finance parent shops. So when we're thinking of all this together, obviously, our goal is to kind of like maximize where, where we're putting our resources and try to address the needs of our families the best we can. So one thing that we are going to be trying to do as we expand our enrichment program from elementary into middle school is to try to create some of those more authentic learning experiences and community connections that parents were indicating they might like to see in that life skill type grouping with some middle school enrichment spiraling up into sixth grade next year. So we'll start with that team working with sixth grade and then work that up in seventh and eighth grade. So that will be kind of that life skills focus. As well as the executive functioning and financial literacy, as you've heard before, are going to be infused in some of our new course offerings. The new math class, as well as a new communication class. Arts and related arts courses will remain the same with an expansion at elementary into coding. That tech encoding piece was the only piece that parents indicated that they were interested in, that we did not have anything that was addressing that. So for the 25, 26 school year, all grades will have one class period per week. Not all grades?
No. K through two.
K through two. Sorry. Thanks for that. Moving on through a couple iterations. Continuing to invest in elementary world language programming aligned with District 67 at the elementary level for beginning and second grade. So we are going to, since the coding is happening at the early grades, we wanted to also make sure we had extra time for English literacy, fluency and those foundations of literacy. So we're going to start Spanish world language programming at second grade, which is again where District 67 starts it. So we will have mirroring their program starting next year. And then what we'd like to do is take next year to kind of investigate or think through with maybe a task force or a committee, looking at summer school and then also after-school academic support and tutoring. I think that we might be able to rethink how we offer that support and maybe attract more families with a service that they're clearly looking for, that we haven't been able to provide in terms of outside of school academic support. If we're able to kind of take some time to rethink that and then get some actual times and dates out to parents, I think we can get a better idea of who would be able to schedule for that kind of a thing or who would actually be interested. And then we'll continue to work with the community to support access to that quality summer programming that we have in town that addresses the arts and creativity and physical movement and that summer camp type experience. It's actually existing within our park district or other community organizations, which we're not really as, as good at setting up here in school. Which we have been able to strengthen a lot in the last couple of years in terms of community support for the blockers and new programming and providing some scholarships and money for families to be able to get into those programs that last longer throughout the summer and provide more of those types of experiences that families were asking for. So that's where our work will be focused next year. Any questions on this part before I move on to the literacy audit?
How, how long is the coding, like, class period?
Is it 30 minutes?
30 minutes.
And is, is it like specific? Is that taking the place of, I guess, what's that taking the place of in like a week?
It's not taking, well, because we're shifting Spanish away from the younger grades, it is in part replacing Spanish. And then there's, for the most part, it's just replacing Spanish. I just went through the step in my mind.
Yeah, sorry, man. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, as you may remember, we also have been working a lot on our foundations of reading and literacy instruction and at our elementary level. And have been working on that for a couple of years and shifting to align ourselves with the science of reading. Just want to take a little bit of a step back before we go into the audit. As a reminder, science of reading is a term that we're all talking about a lot now and we're hearing about a lot. It's a body of research that outlines how scientists have learned that kids actually learn how to read. It emphasizes the importance of explicit systematic instruction and five key components. Phonying with awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. And there's a lot of research to back up this approach. But again, the shift to science of reading is not about buying a new program. It's about aligning our teaching methods with how children's brains learn to read. That doesn't mean that we aren't open to new programs and we won't be supporting with new resources. But shifting to it really is more about teacher learning and professional development. So what this means for our classroom is, as you know, we've been working to align our curriculum instruction, intervention and assessment to support all those foundational skills. And we're embedding a lot of teacher professional development into our school day and outside of the school day. So we'll talk about what that looks like in a moment. And we're emphasizing a more structured literacy model with clear intentional and cumulative instruction that builds a strong foundation. We implemented this year a new assessment tool called AIMS Web. AIMS Web is a universal screening and progress monitoring tool, which is grounded in all of those components that I just talked about. It's been around for a very, very long time, and it's a curriculum-based measure. It helps us measure the specific components of phonics, phonying with awareness, phonics, fluency and comprehension, and identify students who need extra support. So it can be used as a screener to identify students from a whole group who need extra support. And we can also use it as a progress monitor to guide the intervention. So if we find that a student needs extra support, that same tool can be used more frequently to monitor whether or not they're making progress. So it supports our MTSS program by ensuring that we're making database decisions as frequently as possible and addressing students' learning needs. So as we were working through and as we have been working through this, we were grateful to be connected with a literacy consulting firm. And we thought this would probably be a good idea for us as we're kind of launching this new assessment tool to get a baseline of what we're seeing. And then also have a third party kind of look at our math assessments and just take a look at our student scores and have another set of eyes looking at how our students are doing in foundational and even upper grade literacy. The full report is in the packet. I'm not going to go through it all here, but we'll do some high level, a high level overview. So when we look at early literacy progress in this audit, the data shows that our kindergarten and first grade students are showing pretty consistent growth across the year. Listening comprehension and auditory vocabulary scores are strong, so there's a lot of good exposure that's happening. But we had not at this point in the year assessed phoneme segmentation and nonsense word fluency. So that's breaking words apart by their sounds. And also reading words that aren't actually words to measure whether or not a student can decode without context. So a nonsense word would be ultimately one where it doesn't mean anything, but you're sounding it out using the rules of decoding and phonics and phonemic awareness. So we did have kind of a gap in this audit in terms of those two skills. In terms of our upper grades, grades two through five, showing good trends in comprehension. But we're seeing some, some gaps in growth for low-performing students. And then on the second bullet point, some of our high students in fifth grade suggesting that we're kind of having a trouble reaching, trouble reaching those higher readers. And there is definitely some evidence of some skill gaps persisting into the upper grades. And that's not super surprising because our fifth and sixth graders would have been kind of on that tail end of COVID. And as we were just starting to get really good at that work with phonics that we implemented in 2019. And then we sort of had that rough time there. So in terms of the implications outlined, we need to be working on those foundational skills earlier and with greater precision. So when we talk about our professional development, we're actually having our teachers engage in really pretty robust PD, graduate level work in how to teach reading in this way, so that we can get better at targeting those foundational skills. The diagnostic tools and progress monitoring are needed. Again, that's that AIMS Web system that we identified and will be going through their suggested lists of benchmarks. And then differentiating tier one instruction by skill-based groups. And what that means is not really looking at the level of the reader, but instead looking at the skill we're trying to address and breaking students into groups based on what they're working on at that time, so that we can really target and hone in on those specific skills that students might be struggling with. We have in the last year been able to look at some other districts that do targeted skill and ability groups like that. And we're already in the process of kind of thinking through what that will look like in grades one and two. So our recommended next steps that are in the audit are to adopt that single streamlined assessment tool, which we have done in AIMS Web. Dibbles is just another version of it. I think it's a little older. Ensure that all our K1 students are assessed in phoneme segmentation and nonsense word fluency. AIMS Web does recommend a progression of assessment. So what that means is that there are some things that are assessed at certain points in the year based on readiness and whether or not they've been instructed. Phoneme segmentation is a thing that would be recommended to be assessed at the beginning and the middle of first grade, but not in the spring. So we're trying to follow that recommended suite of assessment. And the reason we do that is because And the reason we do that is because if AIMS Web is recommending it, that means they also have norms attached, which means that we can make good decisions based on that. If we assess them outside of the normed window, then we don't really have a great idea of whether or not they're progressing comparatively to their peers who are being instructed in those same skills. We want to incorporate a little bit explicit, a little bit more explicit morphology instruction, which means breaking words apart, like prefixes and suffixes and root words in terms of vocabulary from grade one up to support that understanding of new vocabulary and comprehension. And then doing, continuing to provide consistent professional development in the science of reading and structured literacy. So the things we're working on now, so again, like I talked about, we are going to be following that progression of assessments to ensure that we have normed data. We have given some outside of the window. Our students look like they're doing really well, but again, there's no norms for that. So we want to keep tabs on it, but we would like to always have those norms to reference. Working to find resources that incorporate more morphology as well as vocabulary development and comprehension. So again, when we say we're not necessarily adopting a program, we will be looking for resources to address these specific areas. Providing school-wide PD on the six shifts resources, so shifting from the programs and services that we've been providing to a more structured literacy, that will be a school-wide professional development. And we are also sending small teams and cohorts of teachers to letters training. That is a full-year professional development program that actually is equivalent to graduate-level coursework in teaching reading. It's very structured, very good, and very robust. And then continuing to assess our units of instruction and rebuild and keep revising our GPTC and looking at resource and materials to make sure that our teachers have what they need while we monitor our data and make sure we're making the decisions. So that's where we are right now with the literacy audit. I do see us repeating the audit in a year to see what progress we've made and if we haven't addressed some of the gaps. But we were grateful to have that done, and it's always nice to work with a partner who can help us analyze how we're doing. Any questions on that?
Everyone, how long is the AIMS Web assessment?
It depends. Some of them are really short, and they're, they're just probes. Like, some of them take, like, less than a minute or about a minute. Some are class-wide assessments, and those can take, I don't know, three to five minutes. Depends on the assessment.
So it's nothing?
Some are, no, it's not math. It's not math at all. In fact, they're pretty short.
Love a one-on-one teacher interview.
And you're going to use how often?
There, we have three benchmark windows, so fall, winter, and spring. And some are different assessments based on that timeframe for each grade. But then the progress monitoring could happen as rapidly as four to six weeks. If a student is in an intense intervention, we might be administering the same assessment every four to six weeks to determine how they're doing and decide if they have a rate of improvement that's helping them. And then we make a decision based on it.
And do we pay as a district for the whole suite?
Yes. We have access to all the AIMS Web assessments, and we can do them with as many students as we want. And then using that, and then, as you know, we cut back on the map assessments for K-1 because we're doing all that assessing with AIMS Web. But we have at times, if we needed to, kind of moved a student into that map, too. If we need another data point, we're pretty flexible with making sure we have the right information.
I think this is great, fantastically incorporating so much of this, you know, the science-based methodology, or at least the focus on some of the things. I think that'll, you know, hopefully show some really good results.
I mean, I'll-
Without throwing out the best of it.
Right.
The best of what we already got.
We, we know from, and I think I presented on the ninth-grade data and some things that we're getting back from Lake Forest High School, we know for sure that writing is a strength in this district. And so we really want to keep going with our writing instruction because our kids go to the high school as really excellent writers. And so writing is a huge component of literacy. And vocabulary development is part of that writing and the grammar piece. So as you know, we've invested more in grammar, we're investing more in vocabulary. And then all the work we're doing with science and social studies, increasing the time at middle school, increasing the time at elementary, will also help with that knowledge base that the science of reading also endorses. So it's not just about these foundational skills, but then also making sure that kids are building that vocabulary and that rich vocabulary so that they can not only understand more of what they read, but write at higher levels as well. And finally, we had been asked at our community roundtable to look into the data regarding class sizes in District 65. So we work with Effer Group, which is a research and analytics consulting firm. They help us and a lot of other districts across the country with looking at student outcomes. And they actually measure sort of a value-added approach. They have all of our data, they're our data warehouse, and they can run reports in lots of different ways for us. And so we asked them, could you take our three years of data and examine growth and proficiency for kids in kindergarten through fifth grade, utilizing MAP and IAR scores based on the number of students in the classroom? And the growth for students was compared with historicals. So that, because they have all the data, they can determine whether or not students are growing at the predicted rate or more than the predicted rate or less than the predicted rate. So again, like I said, a scores, a growth scores deviation from zero indicates, indicates the degree to which a student is outperforming or underperforming their projected performance. The full report is again in the packet. I'm not going to go through it all here. But it's available for anyone to take a look at. But the results suggest for those three years, there's no consistent relationship between class size and growth for either math or ELA in those school years. There are some results in the 22, 23 school year indicating that smaller classrooms had higher growth, but results in 21, 22, and 23, 24 indicated either no relationship or sometimes a reverse relationship where the smaller class size had less growth. Growth by grades, so we had that report. It was sort of a big group, and then we asked them to break it out by grade, suggested a possible benefit to smaller class sizes in kindergarten math and reading, although we didn't see that in one through three. In grades four and five, students in smaller class sizes tended to have higher growth in math, but it didn't make that difference in reading in ELA. So this tells us, and sort of like backed up by the research, even though the research is old, what newer research is saying is that, yes, sometimes class size will make a difference, but truly teacher skill and their ability to differentiate within whatever group they have makes a really much bigger difference. If we're looking to really take, maximize the effect of a class size reduction, we would need to look at anywhere from five to 10 kids to actually see a statistically significant difference. If you're looking at one to two kids, there's really not going to be a difference just based on class size. That doesn't mean there aren't other variables within a classroom that would make it difficult that year. And so we try to mitigate those things whenever we can. Providing teachers as much support as they can, providing support with behaviors or classroom dynamics, providing resources for students that don't have them, et cetera. So there's lots of variables that can impact student achievement and growth. But in terms of just isolating class size, this report found that there was not a consistent relationship. Any questions on that?
You know, I, I mean, couple of comments. One is, this is a great data and input, you know. And so it's very extremely useful to be able to look at that. And I know the purpose and objective was to look at class size and measure class size versus results. But I kind of looked at this also just in looking at kind of results. And I think I did the numbers right. And it shouldn't surprise us because we've seen them all before. But, but just to remember, you know, what I came up with was, and I think what some of the things that you mentioned was how hard it is to move kids, you know, from low performing to low average to average, especially as they get further along, you know, third, fourth, fifth, and how important that A and two is in terms of, you know, focusing on those kids.
For sure. And that ties into that literacy piece, too, and the tutoring piece. So kind of like pulling all these three together, they seem like disparate reports that are dealing with different things, but actually, they're kind of all getting at the same thing, which is that early foundation is so really important. Some of our students need more support in first and second grade, K-1 and two, and we need to be looking at how we can creatively provide that extra support, either within the school day, which we're looking at models of that kind of ability grouping and skill grouping so we can get more targeted support, but then also outside of the school day if they need it because we need to be creative with our time.
I mean, it seems like if they don't really get it by-
Second and third grade.
We're able to move them up, you know, then it's just much more difficult.
Yes.
The other thing is, you know, it came out in that one graph. Something that's worth putting up there. But I, I ran all the numbers, and it came out that we were still like at 43% for reading, 45% for math of students meeting, meeting the standard.
In which graph is that? Which year?
That was just, I, that was like for all classes all over the years.
Was that in the Agra report?
Well, that was, it was, no, that, no, but yeah, that was the Agra, Agra analysis. And what's, you know, the big summary that was right at first that hit it, which is sort of in line with what IAR results are similar. So it's just, you know, that's the challenge we got.
Absolutely.
But again, I think, you know, if we start them off early and get them up to speed early, and hopefully what we've done this past year is going to show some good results.
Our teacher, our teachers are here to learn. There's been a lot of changes and a lot of professional development. And so we're working hard to make sure that they feel supported as they're making these shifts because some things are hard to undo in terms of professional practice. And so instilling new habits, getting new questioning techniques going, making sure that teachers are reading data correctly, reading with students well, analyzing their performance well, those are, those take a lot of work and support.
Yeah, you know, Alex, I like to, you know, what we've done in the last year, and I'm excited to, to see some good results from that. Maybe not this year, but we take it, take another year.
It can take some time, but. And we'll continue to monitor it. We're committed to doing that and making whatever adjustments we need to go along.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Let's move on to Kevin, technology update.
You've seen me up here a lot this year. So I figured it'd be a good idea to kind of recap some of the stuff that we've done. A lot of things have been proposed and given to the board as kind of one-offs. And I want to give an overarching view of where some of those projects are. Now that they're either in progress, completed, or quite frankly, some things came up as we evolved throughout the year just through natural conversation, meetings with other people and some of the committees that we reunited, like the technology committee. So this year, we reunited the technology committee as well as we had the Anxious Generation Book Club that we submitted over the summer. And we got a lot of good feedback from that. And some of the things that we decided to do and made progress on, some of the things you see here on the slide. I'm going to go into some of these further down in the presentation, but two that for sure I want to touch on right away was the students' take-home and early-grade levels. We're something that came out of our technology committee and the anxious generation that we hadn't anticipated earlier in the year. A, moving so fast as it did, and will be really coming to fruition this, as it did. And so students' take-home now, students are no longer going to take home devices K through five, which is really nice and a big win as we start evaluating the potential use of technology and really limiting our screen time for our students outside of the school day and even inside the school day. And then also, early-grade levels, we've also decided to pull back on kindergarten, kindergarten devices at all that, in every classroom. And so only five devices will be per classroom each kindergarten we'll have access to. So they'll use that for a small room or maybe summer work, but each student will have their own device in kindergarten grade. One thing that you see up there a lot about was some of the budgetary, some of the spending. And so I wanted to touch on some, some of the spending has been impacted and how some of it is looking long-term. One thing that I do and have done each of the years I've been here has been evaluate our subscriptions and our software. That's a big part of our budget. And so we have, over the first two years, eliminated over 20 subscriptions that we had just because of use or looking at student growth. This year was one of the ones that we really looked at and saw there were some subscriptions that didn't have a substantial amount of growth and didn't limit, didn't justify using, continuing with that. We've estimated over 20, saving over $20,000 over the first couple, over this year. Ooh, I had it right now.
Sit down.
So-
Do you want us to move to another presentation?
Yeah, you want me to do mine?
All right. Let's switch to, go back to you.
I'm going.
Nate, you guys some water?
Water, which is orange juice.
I would say I could continue with your presentation, but I'm best for you.
I do want to say I've heard from so many parents about the keeping the devices home, like so many, and-
Not bringing them home?
The YouTube, yeah, the K through five, not bringing them home. And they are super happy with it. Feedback from the community.
Kevin, can you do from yours?
Thanks.
Yeah, you want to move on?
Yeah. You can do it in gym. Table that one. Okay. All right. So we're going to move on and talk a little bit about what District 65 does to support staff. As we're in hiring season right now, and I know that we have some openings, and we've had some community members reach out with questions about hiring and the process that we have for recruitment and hiring and retention. And I just thought we, we really haven't talked about it. And as we talked with our board members who have had conversations with community members, this is something that would be useful for the community to know more about. So we're going to go through the, kind of the stages of supporting our staff. But one thing I wanted to start with is that we're committed to creating the conditions where teachers thrive. We know that when we have happy, supportive teachers, we have more successful and supportive students. So we are making a lot of investments in teacher voice, professional development, collaborative culture. It's about raising student outcomes across the board, and we have to invest in our teachers in order to make that happen. So we'll start with recruitment. We typically don't have that many openings. We have anywhere from two to five or maybe six openings a year. And so we recruit in some similar ways every year, and then some years we do some different recruiting. So we have done job fairs, but for the most part, we don't get a huge response from job fairs because we're usually there with much bigger districts with a lot more openings and a lot more swag to hand out. So this is from a job fair, and we reuse it every board. But we do advertise on K-12 JobSpot. We use our social media, we use our newsletters, we use our Village newsletter. We ask our folks to reshare and, and help us to spread the word. A big one that we do now that Amy's helped us get hooked up with is Handshake that connects us with many, many colleges and universities, many that are close. And we get a lot of applicants from there as well. So looking at the elementary teacher applicants, when we look at the trends, so in 2022, we had two openings. We had 170, or 107 teaching applicants. And you can see with the years that we've had since, since I've been here, we get a good amount of applicants, and we certainly have a nice pool of people to choose from. We have 86 so far for the openings for next year, and they're still coming in. So I did this a couple of weeks ago, and the applications are routed directly to me, and we have had many come in since then. Once an applicant submits their application, which is very, very easy now in AppleTrack, it's a, it's a- It's a, it's a system that many school districts use, and so you don't have to apply multiple times. It's kind of like the Common App. If you are a parent of a college kid, you can apply once to many, many places. You can apply to many different school districts, and there might be just a couple of questions that are different. So that's great. Once that happens, then those applications get routed to the hiring supervisor. Typically, that's the principal for the building. That's their, one of their job responsibilities. But sometimes it is our assistant superintendent of student services, or sometimes it's a director of technology. Whoever is sort of hiring for that position, those applications get routed directly to them. In a building hire, principal and assistant principal, one or the other will do a screening call. They'll screen first before they call, looking at the resume and application, the years of experience, qualifications and endorsements for the, for the positions that we're hiring for specifically, and then look for any skills or specialized training, for example, E L endorsements or special education certification, anything that kind of adds bilingual, you know, all those kinds of pieces. And then they'll set up a phone call. Once that phone call is complete, then they move on. The applicants that move on from the phone call go to a team interview. The team interview is made up of staff members from maybe the grade that they might be teaching in, but also maybe other grades. Because as we know, especially in elementary, teachers change positions. They change grades, they change teams based on sections. And so what we're looking for is a fit for the building. We're looking for the best teachers we can find who might fit in with any of our teams. The teachers that make up the interview committee are sometimes volunteers and sometimes they're by invitation. So if we don't feel like we have a representative group just based on our volunteers who want to be on the committee, we will invite teachers to participate. At L B E S, they institute a performance task. So they might be given an email from a parent and asked to respond to the email so that they can see their communication skills. They might be given a set of data and asked to analyze the data and tell us some trends or how they might structure their instruction. So they're trying to get at like, how does the teacher work in some of the things that they would have to do in the job? And then this year they will also be asked to teach a lesson to students when they're in class and be observed while they're doing that. That's important for us, and we've been trying to back our interview process earlier and earlier so that we can fit this in. And we are very, very excited that we'll be able to do that this year. Once we have decided on our candidates and offered them the position, then we start orienting them before they, the school year even begins. This, we typically do a new teacher orientation that starts before the regular institute days. This year we're backing it out even further to the last week in July. We're going to be doing a new teacher onboarding with a curriculum and student services overview. They will get their technology and all their passwords. They will have time, a little bit of time then with their mentor, more time on those days before the institute day. So in the summer they'll get like the framework, the nuts and bolts of what they need. They'll have time to explore. And then when they come in those two to three days before the, all the staff come, they'll have time with their mentor. That's when we give them the bus tour and they ride around town and hear about where our kids are from and learn about our community. And so that's sort of more about culture building and making connections and building relationships. And then they're pretty much, pretty set up by the time the rest of our staff arrive for our three institute days. Then our new staff start their two-year mentoring program, which I'll talk a little bit more in a minute. Professional development, some of it is mandated by the state. All of us participate in that. Some is by invitation, for example, the letters training or those kinds of literacy pieces that we think are important based on their grade level. And then some is choice. So if they want to develop themselves, then they also have the choice. And then a big part of our teacher support system is the release time that they have at elementary and the curriculum release time we continue to do at Bell. In mentoring year one, they're, they are, all teachers are assigned a mentor, teacher that helps them with what they need. Some of our staff members come to us with years of experience. They don't necessarily need a mentor to show them how to teach. They need a mentor to learn about leg fluff. Some of them are first-year teachers. They actually need a lot of. So they have a one-on-one mentor. And then the mentors have a checklist and go through training themselves. We'll talk about the checklist in a minute. Our principals and assistant principals check in with them throughout the year. Their team meetings happen weekly. And then they also engage in observations with their mentors. So the mentor will observe them in the classroom and give them feedback. The mentee will then go and observe their mentor and also be able to learn from them as well. That's all part of the year one process. Year two is a little bit more differentiated. Like I said, some of our staff members at the end of year one set up, ready to go. They're good with their team meetings. Some need a little bit more support. Our mentor coordinator handles that differentiated support. So some of the things that are talked about in the monthly checklist, you can see here, I'm not going to go through them all, but there's a lot that teachers need to learn month by month. And you can't front load it all in the summer because it's too much. And so we establish this checklist so they can get timely professional development right before they need it, right at the time that they need it. So they're set up for success month by month. You can see we incorporate some support for parent-teacher conferences. We support them with their evaluation process. We help them make sure that their classroom management is going well, that they finalize all their requirements for their first-year evaluation, all those things. And then towards this time of the year, they're already preparing for next year. They're looking at what they need to order. They're looking at their budget, making sure their assessments are set up. They've closed out of their report cards, all of those things that teachers need to learn in their first year. A lot of this stuff is district-specific. So you would think that a teacher who's coming here from another district would be like, I know how to do everything. Every district does things differently. And so this is a really important infrastructure for us to have in place so that any staff member can feel successful. Then we have our evaluation process. So all of our teachers are evaluated every year. Our non-tenured teachers go through a formal evaluation cycle every year that they're non-tenured. That includes formal observations with pre-imposed conferences with their evaluator, which could be the principal or the assistant principal. We use the Danielson rubric, which is what most school districts around us use. Then there's informal observations that happen with feedback, a summit of conference and a final rating. All of our teachers have the same rating that incorporates student growth. So there's a student growth component that's calculated for all of our teachers. It's a collective goal. And then their professional practice is based on their own observations and their own evaluation cycle. Our tenured teachers, once they're tenured, go through a three-year evaluation cycle. In one, the first year of their tenured status, they go through a formal cycle, which includes exactly what happens with our non-tenured teachers. Second goal, second year, they make a goal and work through it with their supervisor. And then the third year is peer observation where they go in to classrooms or people come in to observe them. Kind of like a revisiting of that, like mentor, observation, peer feedback situation that happens in their first year. Then obviously we want to, so this is a big investment when we hire someone. So we want to keep them here. So here are some of the ways that we work on that. We want to make sure we offer professional development. Sometimes our teachers want to advance to new positions. They want to try to be, get a specialist endorsement. They might want to expand their degree so that they might be able to be a reading specialist or an L B S one or something later. We want to support them with that tuition reimbursement. They might want to teach a different grade level or a different subject area that they're qualified to teach. That would be a transfer. Sometimes those are voluntary. If we can accommodate what a teacher wants, we try to do that as long as they're qualified or if they're working toward it. Sometimes we have to ask teachers to transfer. And with that, there's an entire process for an involuntary transfer that includes a lot of feedback and death and forth between the teacher, their administrator, and sometimes myself. We want to make sure that all of our teachers will be successful with any student they're qualified to serve. That's our goal. We don't want to be having teachers specializing or boxing ourselves into certain teachers are good with certain kids. We know everyone has a different style and personality. We want to encourage that. But the ultimate goal of our professional development is that everyone is able to make sure every student is successful. So we want to give them planned time. They have budgets. They have the resources and tools they need. Our class placement process tries to make sure that whatever class we're assigning to a teacher, that they're qualified and capable of handling those class placements. We have strategic articulation between grades, about students and about curriculum. So if I'm a fourth-grade teacher, at some point I'm going to be talking to the third-grade teachers about what they know about those students so that I can make sure I'm doing those things year after year. And then I'll be articulating up with the fifth-grade teachers. So there's that vertical alignment. And then obviously we're very, very proud and grateful for our parent-teacher partnerships, like the P T O and the Alliance that provide extra support. And then, as you know, we measure our culture and climate as well. Our human X and five essentials data are really important to us. And we look at them and try to make adjustments to make sure that our schools are the best they can be for our staff. This is our spring-to-spring measure of the percent of staff highly engaged and satisfied. Last year at this time, about seventy-seven point seven percent of our student or staff were feeling that way. And we've improved to seventy-nine percent, which is great. And then the bottom screenshots are from the five essentials. The five essentials is a standardized culture and climate survey that the state of Illinois makes us give every year and reports out. This is the one where if we don't get twenty percent of parents, we don't get a report on it. We always have our staff report and we always have our student report because we have them do it during the school day. We want to acknowledge that every year there are areas for us to improve on. Every single year, our staff will come back to us saying there are things that we need to work on, and that's okay. Because our staff changes every year, our initiatives change every year, our students change every year, and our support needs to change every year. So each building has a building leadership team that looks at these data and determines what they can do differently to make sure the culture and climate gets better and better for teachers every year. This is not an administrative-only, like we're trying to figure out what teachers want. Teachers are helping us plan and support and implement this work. And we think that's a really important part of our collaboration. We really love to recognize our staff. That's another way we try to keep them around. Educator of the year, if you were here for it, it's amazing. We participate now every year. We have our gives thanks program and our buffer cards where teachers can acknowledge each other and recognize each other for good work they're doing. We honor service awards at five, ten, fifteen, twenty years every year and above. We're so grateful for P T O, teacher appreciation, stock the fridge, weeks that they do, gifts that they do, like P T O is amazing. So is our alliance in terms of supporting with grants for extras that were, as a district, we're not able to really fully fund. And then finally, we have multiple ways that we recognize our retirees. It's really important to us that when they've dedicated that much time to us as a district, that we recognize them. So I highlight all this and all of this work because it feels like it's a lot of attention that we pay to adults. But there are some actual challenges that we're trying to, to address with this work. Education has become more competitive, especially in this area. Salaries and compensation are going up. Climate is, is being paid attention to by most of the districts, if not all in our area. As an industry, we cannot provide remote work. So the new generation of people coming up after COVID who are expecting to be able to like have flexible hours and work from home sometimes, that does not work with elementary education. So we need to find other ways to make this an enticing career. Team compatibility is really important to our teachers. They want to like the people they're working with. We don't have to be friends, but we do have to like create a system of support where we're all working together well. And sometimes that does take some administrative support and facilitation. We definitely see an increase in the demands on our teachers, especially since the pandemic. We're talking about student growth and achievement. There's a lot of adjustments that we need to make and we've had to make. That's more work on our teachers. It's more learning. It's more stress. It's more assessment. And so we want to support them through that. And then finally, in our community, and I'm sure in others, we have experienced an increase in parent and community requests. Parents and community will often request students that they want their children to be with, students that they don't want their children to be with in class, teachers they want to have, teachers they don't want to have. And so what that does for us is provides a lot of constraints, and we are not a big district. So there's not a whole bunch of ways that we can accommodate those. And that becomes stressful too, because many of the requests come into principals, but a lot of them go directly to teachers. And they really do want to accommodate, but it's hard to keep that. So just as an illustration, you can see in, before I got here in seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, we were looking at elementary requests being between twelve and twenty. We're up near forty now for the last few years. And it doesn't seem like a lot, but actually that's a lot of constraints in an already constrained system where we're trying to balance classes, trying to make sure that we have the right teachers with the right qualifications, and also creating a culture where all of our staff and all of our students can get along with each other and we can create a community that's warm and welcoming and sensible on for everyone. So those are some of the challenges. That's why we pay attention to the whole process of teacher support and development through their entire journey from recruitment all the way through retirement. We want to make sure they feel good here so that they stay with us. Any question? It's a lot. It's really, thank you. I'm really, I'm really proud of everything that's been done here and that continues to be done here. It's just a really, really wonderful place to be. And that's because of our staff.
I think this, the presentation will help answer a lot of questions.
I know we've had people concerned about the amount of new hires, and I can assure you there have been years when we've had five or six new hires at elementary. And we have some folks in the room who were hired that year and it was great. So sometimes it's great to be a part of a bigger cohort because you come in with a class. You come in with a group that's, you're supporting each other, and I'm excited for that this year. Yeah.
Kevin, do you want to, or do you want to just pause till June? Because that's okay too.
We'll push you.
Awesome. All right, moving to Jay. I haven't heard from you in so long, so we just thought we could do six things to talk about today.
They're all very quick.
In a quick
These are annual approvals of the requirement of school code that the district charter, which is me, is bonded. So there's basically a terms policy, I mean, a percent of the amount of all cash basically that we have of the school, of the last school year, which was almost two million dollars. So the ten percent, it was almost twenty million dollars. So ten percent would be two million dollars. That's the amount of policy. The premium is the same as last year, or the insurance one is the same as last year. So we're still getting started on approval of that. Yeah, questions? Hazardous routes. So again, every year we have the glory of education approve route, the hazardous routes, bus routes in the district. And there is a set of criteria that takes into account the distance, whether there are sidewalks, how far they're from the road, the level of traffic, speed of traffic, things like that. And if they, there's a point system, and if there's maybe more than a certain number of points, then that area is labeled kind of hazardous. Really doesn't have a lot of impact for our district because our type of school district is not required to provide transportation. We provide optional transportation to students. We also don't receive reimbursement for regular transportation. Schools that do receive reimbursement are reimbursed for those additional hazards routes. So this is something that we do every year. There were original surveys were done in the eighties. We reevaluated it a few years ago and nothing has changed in the prior year. So and your packet maps are included so you can see which routes these are and where the hazards are. But there's a resolution for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, naming those student hazard routes that we're asking for approval for.
Another question, any question?
If the pedestrian bridge, I'm amazed that were would that remove?
That is, we would remove one of the hazardous routes for the areas that are unwanted.
So maybe like something more current than from the eighties would be on that.
Well, yeah. I mean, we did, we did look at it again.
I know you always look at it. It's from eighty-two. Who's an assistant superintendent then? Did you know that?
I didn't, I hadn't looked into.
Brilliant, we, we too.
Also every year, the board, according to board policy, for thirty revenue investments, the board is required to approve the list of off-year depolitaries. That's where we keep all of our funds. The depositors have not changed since the prior year. They're listed there. Nearly were established in the purpose. Also, there is a resolution for ISLAF, which is the Illinois School District Record Asset Fund, plus it's where a lot of our investments are kept. And so the, the current collateral agreement is also the board not get it with the worst damages. So I just can't approve for those.
Three more, or two?
Life safety update. So we have Life safety update. So we had our architects out and they did a life safety survey for us. One is required to get by the school code every ten years. They also, at the same time, they're just facility assessment report. So the report is included in your packet. The headline is nothing big and everything looks great. There's very few items that are included on the report. Anything on there that's in categories A or B need, are required by law to be addressed. So any A items have to be fixed within a year. Any B items have to be remedied within five years. Any C items are there just as suggestions, but those are not required to be developed. The, what is in your packet is just our additional assessment. And some of those things, Andy has already fixed or worked on and he's going through and looking to take care of some of them. More minor ones even before the report is submitted to the state. So there will probably be less things on that report than current, than are currently on there. Facility assessment report also is a draft. In the fall, I'll be bringing the complete report that will have a lot more summary information. But basically what they did is they walked around and they just, this helps inform my long term capital plan. To look at the, all the district facilities and equipment and kind of the useful life and what condition it's in and then project out when it needs to be replaced. There's a total of about four million dollars of work that they've identified to be done over the next fifteen years. So nothing, not a lot of super urgent things, but it's some of the stuff we knew about and some of the other stuff. It's just things to keep in mind that are routine maintenance. I will be probably talking about it a little bit when we do our budget, but we have based big, we have bonds that we will be done paying in twenty twenty nine. And we'll have a big drop off in our bond payments, which means our taxpayer will go way down. So that's great if you're a taxpayer. What I've found is that with our new teacher contract and some of the, some of the spend down we've done recently on our fund balance, we don't, we're not generating enough surplus every year, or I don't have left money in the budget each year to handle all of the facilities that we will have. So I can't address that, no four million dollar worth of work, just based on annual budget alone. So I'm going to be meeting with our financial advisor to talk about what we can do. I'd love to be able to issue some debt out and stick it in that spot when the other bonds are are due. So I don't want to increase the debt burden right now on current taxpayer, but then, you know, when some of that debt comes off. So instead of having a taxpayer go all the way down, maybe have it go down a lot, but not quite as far down. And they get some money that we have to take care of some of our solvency, because I don't know that we'll be able to do that, just on operating going in and out. But so that's why, these are really helpful reports. We bring, we'll submit this to the state in twenty in September and we'll bring the final draft to the slide report.
And we're just approving tonight?
There really don't need to approve anything. This is just have an update because I had mentioned that, I mean, you approved the
Oh, that's right.
Payment to do the plan, like in the fall, and we didn't do it till spring. So the update kept getting pushed, getting pushed. So this is just from information. And then the last thing is disposition of assets. So we had Quest Food Service for many years. And we purchased equipment that was used in a cafeteria style food service environment. And we've switched and moved away from that. And so we have this equipment kind of tucked into stairwells and behind mats and things all over our district. And so I'm looking to expose that equipment and get as much recoup as much as we can for it. I found any used equipment company that is willing to take it off our hands and give us thirty two hundred dollars. So I'm sort of asking for, will I just notify the board or policy whenever we get with the assets? We need to notify you if it's de minimis. Say this is still the minimum season, so just.
All right, we're going to move on to our action items this evening. Starting with our superintendent contract approval. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the superintendent contract with four point five percent increase for the twenty five, twenty six school year. So move second. Any discussion?
Just to confirm, the contracts remaining the same, it's just the.
Yep, and the current contract is. Again, in the pack.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, Lauren, can we have a follow up?
Sure.
Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes, Tim Pennage?
Yes.
The motion is passed. Moving to approval of treasurer's surety bond. Twenty twenty five, twenty six. May I have a motion to approve the twenty five, twenty six treasurer's surety bond as just presented? So moved. Second?
Second.
All right, Lauren, can you call vote?
Sure.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Anybody want to discuss what we just approved? All right, I'll just, I'll wing it. All right, so that motion is passed. Okay, so approval of hazardous routes for twenty five, twenty six. May I have a motion to approve the twenty five, twenty six hazardous routes just presented? So moved. Right, anybody want to talk about it more? Awesome. Let's call the vote. Lauren Hirsch, yes. Richard Driver?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is passed and we'll move on to approval of authorized depositories. I need that phonetic. Whatever that was, I'm going to join. So may I have a motion to approve the authorized depositories as just presented? Second. Okay, Lauren, or anybody want to talk about it? All right, let's call the vote. Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
All right, the motion is passed and we'll move on to approval of disposition of assets. May I have a motion to approve the disposition of assets is just presented? So moved. Second. Lauren, can you, or any discussion? All right, we'll just call that vote. Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. All right, well. Discussion. All right, we're going to go through for the approval of True North Cooperative Resolution. It's consideration and action upon a resolution approving the petition for withdrawal from True North Educational Cooperative eight oh four, filed by Glenbrook District two twenty five.
So this is similar to the Glenview resolution that we voted on a couple of months ago. The only difference is that Glenview went through the entire process as outlined in the bylaws of True North. Glenbrook two twenty five is bypassing some of the requirements of the bylaws. They're trying to engage in a one year withdrawal process and expedite it. And they're asking all districts to vote at this time whether or not you approve them withdrawing from True North at this time. I think their, their goal is to be done after next school year as opposed to the bylaws outlining a two year process for withdrawal. There will be a financial impact to like block sixty five that's unknown right now. But my guess is it would be significant. Glenbrook two twenty five is a big district and of the eighteen districts. And there would be a significant impact to the remaining districts in the cooperative if they were to withdraw.
So bigger than?
Bigger than Glenview and potentially it would be the impact of both schools. Well, Glenview is definitely withdrawing because they have had their withdrawal petition approved by the ISC in North Cook or Main Township. Glenbrook hasn't been approved yet, but yes, this would be the second district. Any other questions before we vote?
No, my only comment is, is now before, you know, if I, if I put myself in their shoes and comes this conclusion that, oh, True North isn't, you know, meeting our needs, we will reconsider. And, you know, I would just, would not be happy with having to have other districts approve what we think is best for us.
But they're not following the.
They're, yeah.
So that's, I don't disagree if it's not working for them, but I believe in following the rules. And if we needed to do the same thing, I wouldn't need their approval. I feel like I would go through proper, a proper change.
And also, it's, it's balancing, I, I understand in theory why they're leaving. I also am like, I don't know, follow the rules that you helped implement, just an idea. But it's also what's best for our district. Like, I'm not thinking about what's best for them. I'm thinking about financially, what's the impact on our district? And that's really what I care about because that's why we're here.
Anybody else before we vote?
So, yes is.
Yes would be approving that they can withdraw. A no would be you do not approve of.
Just wanted to.
Yep, great clarification.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the withdrawal of Glenbrook twenty twenty five of the True North Educational Cooperative eight oh four? So moved. Second. All right, Lauren? I'll vote. Laura Brinkstone?
Yeah.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
No.
Carrie Steinbach?
No.
Lauren Hirsch, no. Tim Pennage?
No.
Okay, that motion is failed. Right, so moving on to the personnel report. For May twenty, twenty twenty five, we have some new licensed, non-licensed new hires. We have Chesh Corto, the summer custodian in the district buildings, effective six four twenty twenty five at a salary rate of fifteen dollars per hour. And AJ Ellis, also a summer custodian in the district buildings, effective six four twenty twenty five at a fifteen fifty per hour salary rate. There's some resignations, Bill Mean?
Wine.
Paraprofessional in LBES, effective date is six three twenty twenty five. And Marta Alvarez is a paraprofessional at LBMS, effective six three twenty twenty five. We have a handful of licensed new hires. Brett Monsbano is an elementary school teacher, congratulations, at LBES, effective date eight twenty, twenty twenty five at an annual salary rate of fifty two thousand at the salary schedule placement of BA one. Elizabeth Saliba is a learning behavior specialist one at LBMS, effective eight twenty twenty five, replacing Emma Go at an annual salary rate of seventy thousand one hundred and three dollars with an MA eight salary schedule placement. Frances Dale will be a calling teacher at LBES, effective eight twenty two in twenty twenty five at an annual salary rate of fifty nine thousand three hundred and ninety nine with an MA plus thirty, staff twenty three. And Christina Lai Freed is a Spanish teacher at LBES, effective eight twenty two, twenty twenty five, replacing Alexa Dickinson at an annual salary rate of one hundred and twenty six thousand five hundred and thirty three dollars in her schedule. And then we have Megan Justin is the music teacher at LBES, effective date eight twenty two, twenty twenty five, replacing Riley Wervin at a salary rate of seventy thousand one hundred and three dollars and her schedule placement is MA eight. We have an FM LA, which is Jennifer Denhart is our school nurse at LBES, effective ten one, twenty twenty five to January five, twenty twenty six. May I have a motion to approve the personnel report for May twenty twenty five?
Can I ask one question? Is there a reason why those two are the twentieth? Is it just because they're new to the district to start that? The twentieth versus the twenty second? Yes, they come. Thanks, Sarah. Yeah. Okay, good, sorry. No, you're good.
So. Perfect. Any second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, Lauren, can we tell vote? Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Okay, that's passed. This will be fun too, because it's the E S Y staffing approval that gets read out loud. So bear with me, we have Eric Andico as a teacher at fifty dollars per hour for sixty four hours. Adrian Logan, teacher for fifty dollars per hour at sixty four hours. Christine Su is a teacher for fifty dollars an hour, hour sixty four. Megan Kelly will be a teacher for fifty dollars an hour at sixty four hours. Brett Monsbano will be a teacher, same fifty dollars an hour for sixty four hours. Tommy Aaron's teacher, fifty dollars an hour for sixty four hours. Tina Bowie, teacher at fifty dollars per hour at sixty four hours. Ryan Regan is a teacher, fifty dollars per hour for sixty four hours. Jamie Glover will be a teacher for fifty dollars per hour, sixty four hours. Kate Whitehead is a teacher, LBS one, E S Y, fifty dollars an hour for sixty four hours. Lynn Laser is a teacher, LBS one, E S Y, for fifty dollars per hour for sixty four hours. Ryan Werhane is a teacher, LBS one, E S Y, fifty dollars an hour for sixty four hours. Brett Kreiner will be a teacher, LBS one, E S Y, fifty dollars an hour for sixty four hours. Amber Pringle will be a teacher, LBS one, E S Y, fifty dollars an hour, sixty four hours. Nick Schlinking?
Schlinking?
Paraprofessional, regular pay for sixty hours, sixty hours. Michael Graham, paraprofessional, regular pay for sixty hours. Dale Mickish? Mick? Play that too. Paraprofessional, regular pay plus toileting, sixty hours. Peyton Regan, a paraprofessional, regular pay for sixty hours. Heather McRae, paraprofessional, regular paid plus toileting for sixty hours. Josh Parent, a paraprofessional, regular pay, sixty hours. Janice Swober, paraprofessional, regular pay, sixty hours. We have Jennifer Denhart is a nurse who will also be working with Kathy Sullivan as a nurse. Jennifer's regular pay, thirty six hours, and her dates will be the eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, sixteenth, eighteenth, twenty third, twenty fifth, thirtieth, and the second of July. And then Kathy Sullivan will do fifty dollars an hour for twenty four of those hours, will be the seventeenth, twentieth, twenty fourth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, and July one. Angie Nahou will be an occupational therapist, fifty dollars an hour for sixteen hours. And it turns out she's twice a week instead of her two days a week instead of one day. Jen Perilous Glassman will be a counselor for fifty dollars an hour for forty hours, June eleventh through the twenty sixth. Only three days a week, thirty six hours plus four plans. Jeanette Casey, speech and language, fifty dollars an hour for sixty four hours. Edith Barantinos?
Barantos.
Barantos, secretary, regular secretary pay for seventy five hours. Her hours will be seven thirty to twelve thirty PM. Thank you to all those who will be doing it. And we have a motion to approve the E S Y staffing report for summer twenty twenty five. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right, Lauren, can we call the vote? Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Right, that is passed. We need to have a motion to approve the settlement agreement regarding pending litigation with former employee Margaret Ryan. Do you have a motion? So moved. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Lauren, can you call vote? Sure. Richard Driver?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Brooke Stein.
All right, the motion is passed. We'll move on to Jay for the, sorry, I just said the letter J. It's not for you. Consent agenda, I realized I wasn't labeling them when this just happened. All right, so the consent agenda consists of the following. One, open session meeting minutes of the April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, mini of the whole Board of Education meeting minutes. April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, regular Board of Education meeting. Our treasurer's report, our impress report, our bills report, and repeat card report. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for May twenty, twenty twenty five as presented by administration? So we. All second. Is there any discussion? Or would you like to pull anything out of the consent agenda for a separate vote?
I have one question, please. So today, your treasurer's report. Each month you talk about our favorable interest rates have been helping us this year. And we have a, let's see, where did it go? I think we have a ninety five day, you said it was the average maturity date for our portfolio. Do you consider extending that or do you think it proved it? You know, make that a move on out some?
Well, the average maturity changes throughout the year depending on our needs. So we got all of our tax relief. So we got all of our tax from the, in front. So we'll invest it further out so that it comes due when we need it. So I mean, the goal is to invest it as long as possible. So we have some some money that is needed for liquidity that we have in cash all the time. And then we've got another layer of funds that is, that we don't need so we can invest out longer term. Which are too good and that can go out for two to three years. And then otherwise we try to invest it so that the money is basically, it's like a ladder that comes due as we need it. So each month we have payroll or accounts payable needs and it's designed so that the maturity is aligned with those needs. And we have a year, our, our average maturity is a hundred and fifty days. And then now we're at the end of the year. So things are starting to.
I'm from doing it.
So in June, we'll get our, our first installment taxes and we'll invest them out.
So we don't have like three million dollars we can just put out there for five years or something.
No, I mean, we, at the end of the year, I try to be more conservative. Like at the end of the year, we have a cash balance in a, or maybe our low point of cash balance is five or six million. But you know, we probably, our minimum liquidity is a million dollars and some of it's invested out during the term, but I wouldn't want to tie things up. Okay, thanks for that one. Some districts have a lot more cash sitting around. And if we had a higher, relative to our spending, we might do that, but we're between thirty and fifty percent. So at any point in time, I'm going to be able to get to that.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Lauren? We need to call vote to. To Pennage?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson? Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is passed. Um, we have two four-year requests this month and they can be viewed in the board packet. And we will revisit our public comment. At this point in the meeting, we will welcome public comment. And if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, so may I have a motion to adjourn adjourn the May twenty twenty-five regular Board of Education meeting at eight fifty thirteen? So moved. Second.
Second.
All in paper? Any opposed? Our meeting is adjourned.